We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach Commissioners Meeting on January 2, 2018, at 6:30 PM. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Mac McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
And Commissioner Joe Casello.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Doug Harms of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, the Boynton Beach, Florida stake, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Romulus?
Our dear heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity we have to meet together as a Commission of Boynton Beach City. We ask for -- we're grateful for the opportunity we have to live in Boynton Beach and for the great leadership that we have here. We ask for a special blessing to be with our leadership. Please outpour -- please have thy Spirit to be with them as they lead and guide us throughout this great year of 2018, and that we'll be able to progress and move forward. And we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
Let's believe this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to the agenda approval. Any additions, resolutions, or corrections? I have been requested to move up item 13A. Is everyone okay if we read that before consent agenda? Sure. 13A is the porch -- front porch setbacks. All right. And then the other item is, is that we have it up on our future agenda items, number 14C, members of the Commission has requested to review and discuss the public arts ordinance. I was wondering if you guys would be willing to speak a little bit about it, just so that we can have staff give us options available regarding that art ordinance in February, so that we don't take further time to move forward on this item. So I'd like to put that under 12A. 12C, I'm sorry. All right. Is everything else in okay? We have a motion to approve as amended. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Agenda is approved. We will begin with informational items. Vice Mayor Katz, would you like to begin?
I just wish everybody a Happy New Year and nothing to disclose.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say also, Happy New Year. Mayor, I'd just like to give kudos to you. I'm just saying, for the last two meetings, we had controversial issues up here. I just want to tell you, sir, through it all, you kept us all together. You did not keep the group out there together, but I want to say, sir, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you. I attended Chief Katz's farewell party. I spoke with CBS 12 a couple times regarding our license plate readers. I attended the Palm Beach County Housing Authority, and I would like to talk to the Board a little bit about that. They are currently with the interim executive director. I was not able to stay for the audit as they asked me to leave. I feel that we need to put some pressure on the Housing Authority to move forward with their lots, with their lots that they have in Boynton Beach, as they stated that they would like to do a study, rather than actually be a part of our RFP. And so I want to know what are your -- and so I'd like to put that as a future agenda item, a discussion what the city can have with the Housing Authority to make sure that things are moving forward within the City of Boynton Beach.
Excuse me, when you place it as a future agenda item, let's kind of make it as soon as possible. This is something that has been plaguing the city, and we don't need to keep letting it linger.
Okay. Would you also like to put that as -- reconsider the agenda?
Yes, let's do it now.
Okay. So we'll put that at?
13 -- 12D.
12D. And I just want to wish everyone, I hope everyone had a great Christmas and a wonderful New Year, and I think we're going to make 2018 the best. Commissioner Romulus?
Reed, Mayor, Happy New Year to everyone, and really what I want to do is just kind of share a brief history lesson with all of you. January 1st, 1804, which is approximately 214 years ago, the very first Black republic was founded, and that is the Nation of Haiti. So yesterday was a very festive day for several individuals in and around the country and the world celebrating this momentous occasion and this freeing of a nation of a people who were oppressed under slavery. So I do want to wish everyone who is Haitian or Haitian-American, or of Haitian descent or of Haitian association, a Happy Haitian Independence Day. Thank you.
All right. And Commissioner Casello.
Just like to wish everyone a happy, healthy, prosperous New Year and nothing to disclose. Mayor, on that proposal on the amended agenda to talk about the Housing Authority tonight, we need a second on that, don't we, I believe?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. I'll second that for you. But is this something we should be discussing now? I mean, they don't have a permanent director up there. Is this going to be falling on deaf ears, whatever we try to bring up there?
It may, however, if we don't say anything, no one will hear it.
Okay. I'm fine with that.
All right. Next, we'll move on to announcements. That City Hall will be closed on Monday, January 15, 2018, for observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And next, we have a proclamation on Monday, January 15, 2018, as Martin Luther King Jr. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. And Dr. King's teachings can continue to guide and inspire us in addressing challenges in our communities. And whereas the King Holiday and Service Act enacted in 1994 designated the King Holiday as a national day of volunteer service and charged the Corporation for National and Community Service with leading this effort. And since 1994, millions of Americans have been inspired by the life and work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to serve their neighborhood and communities on the King Holiday. And whereas serving on the King Holiday is an appropriate way to honor Dr. King, meet local and national needs, bring our citizens together, and strengthen our communities and nation. And the King Day of Service is the only federal holiday commemorated as a national day of service and offers an opportunity for Americans to give back to their communities on the holiday and make an ongoing commitment to service throughout the year. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for all our citizens and to celebrate the King Day of Service, January 15, 2018. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, hereby proclaim the 15th of January, 2018, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And we have Greg Murfree to accept. Thank you. Do you have anybody to shoot pictures? Do I have anything to say? City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas Mr. Robert E. Wells, a merchant sailor from the Cat Island in the Bahamas, settled in Boynton Beach in 1890, where he and his wife Elizabeth raised one son, Harry. Whereas in 1892, Robert and Elizabeth Wells helped fund St. Paul African Methodist Episcopal Church officially established in 1900. St. Paul's AME is the oldest church in the city. Whereas in 1896, Mr. Wells and other members of St. Paul's AME successfully petitioned Dade County School Board to provide a school for Boynton's Black African-American children, originally called Boynton Colored School. It has later become known as Pointiana Elementary. Whereas on April 14, 1920, Mr. Wells was the signatory of the documents incorporating Boynton as a town. However, the land owned by him and the rest of his historic heart of Boynton Beach was not recognized in the incorporation and was called Boynton Colored Town. Whereas in 1925, Mr. Wells platted the Robert Wells Subs Division. He built the main thoroughfare in the historic heart of Boynton Beach called Wells Avenue, now known as Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and built a home at number 416. In addition to selling land and building houses, Mr. Wells donated lots to those in need, including St. Paul's AME, for the building of a church. In time, Wells Avenue became a thriving downtown area for the Black African-American community. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor for the City of Boynton Beach, do hereby proclaim the 7th of February, 2018, as Robert E. Wells Day. We have Reverend Wright to accept. You're welcome.
Good evening and Happy New Years to everyone in attendance. You all are in the diocese. God bless you all. Trust we have a great and a prophetic, better Boynton this year. This is a hurting Boynton right now, and it's a very critical time, but I'm always honored during this time of the year. This is the fourth annual honoring and celebration of the Robert E. Wells Day. Generally, in the last three years, I've been practically doing a great thing in having a celebration on the following Saturday of February the 7th, which would be February the 10th this year. My family and I, we have been doing the best we could to try and feed the community and bring information and education about our history, because a tree without roots bears no fruit. And that's a lack of people, a culture, without the history of their origin. They would not produce anything conducive toward an interaction and bringing about some type of solidarity within their community. So I'm here tonight to say that I wanted to read something into the records, which I generally do every year. But I was cut short tonight because I was asked, was I going to take a long time? And I've never taken too much time, because I speak pretty fast and I'm pretty eloquent, by the grace of God. It's a gift. But by the end of the rate, I was offended in being asked that. And I've noticed since I've been coming here and speaking for years, a lot of times when I'm speaking, right at my three minutes, I'm cut short irrespective of how relevant the issue may be. There's always exceptions. And I've noticed, too, that when we elect these people to the diocese and someone from the community bring an issue, it's not about three minutes. It's about the relevancy of the issue, and they address that issue, and not say the three minutes is up, and they leave there feeling pretty down. I know I do. And they don't address the issue. And I don't think it's right. And I think I'm going to take this moment to speak and trust that everyone on the diocese will understand that we elect you for our best interests. And when we come up the stand to speak, we want to be addressed, I mean appropriately, not like we're coming with an issue and it's not about anything. And I just want you to know that. And you stopped me from reading into the record tonight, something that these people that are in attendance need to hear about the history of Boynton Beach. This is not only an honor of my grandfather, but Boynton per se, because it is the true history of Boynton, a history that would have been untold and lost had God, through my ministry, by the grace of God, used me to initiate this historic research project that we have ongoing right now in Boynton, to discover and recognize and honor our African-American history here in Boynton that has not been written in no history book, to God be the glory. And there are some things that you would have known had I been in that spirit and had not been shaken prior to my speaking, that I would have read and you would have heard about Robert E. Wells. He is important as Martin Luther King. And there's so much emphasis on Martin Luther King, but he did not do it alone. Many died, many bled, many sweated. Should be a national day for all of them. There were other factions, too, in the civil rights movement, and I was there. And I'm just saying that there's a lot of emphasis on it, and they're spending a lot of money, you know, every year. But it does not bring about nothing in respect to interaction and productivity in our community. We're just having an affair, an event for a day. But this Robert E. Wells celebration is coming up. I'm anticipating it, being one of the biggest events we've had, to bring an interaction into this community, from the Haitian community, from the Jamaican community, from the Bahamian community, as I'm Bahamian descendant. It was an island thing from the beginning. But we're talking about from the white community, the Jewish community, Boynton as a whole. I want speakers, educational and informational. I want things going on that people can get to know, because if we do not know anything, my people perish for the lack of knowledge. We would never get anything built in our city down here in District 2, where I reside and been residing all my life. We have to get to the root of these things. First, historical, fundamental. There are some things has to be known. And so this event, Robert E. Wells Celebration coming up February the 10th, I'm surprised that no one from the CRA is here tonight, because we have spoken about it in our quarterly meeting with Laura and others. They're acrocyched, that this was going to be probably a great thing coming up February the 10th, if we can get the support. I haven't gotten no support. Y'all have everything. I don't know why it hasn't been circulated to y'all, the whole package, the insurance, what it's going to cost, where everything is going to be, all of that. And I haven't heard anything. And I thought tonight that it would be brought to you all's attention, so that we can expeditiously start getting some finances together, so I can put this event on. We can't wait till the next City Commission meeting. There's just no way I would be able to do what I would like to do, that I know it's going to produce some fruit and some interaction and some consolidate, some solidarity into this community, so that we can focus on these children, because that generation that's out there already, that are adults, only God can change them. And if they had been taught parentally by a father, and in my culture, 86% of our males in prison jails were raised by single mothers, and 98% was on death row was raised by single mothers, where are the fathers in the Black community? So this is unimportant. So if you want to get to stopping the crime in all of this in Boynton Beach, let's get down to the root, parenthood. So I would ask that you give me your support, and this Robert E. Wells Celebration is coming up, and I want to say God bless all of you tonight. I resent that you did not get to hear exactly some of the things that Robert E. Wells accomplished in this city, to God be the glory. But he did not do it alone. There were many others that were with him. We do have names right now to honor them specifically, but I just want to say God bless all of you, and God bless all of you who are doing the right thing in this city.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Mayor, excuse me. I don't know how this did not get on the announcements, but we have Unity in the park this coming Saturday, and we can have the Commission, the CRA, come down and tell us what is going on. We have flyers, but since we're addressing what is going on, this would be a nice time. Thank you.
Good evening. Mercedes Coppin, Special Events Coordinator, Boynton Beach CRA. The third annual MLK Celebration of Unity will be this Saturday. It will be held from 1:00 to 5:00 PM at the Carolyn Sim Center, which is located at 225 Northwest 12th Avenue. It's directly west of Pointiana Elementary School. This free community event will have live music from the Valerie Tyson Band. We will also have music from Articale Sound System, a local Boynton Beach reggae band. There will be free children's activities to all in attendance, which will include face painting, glitter tattoos, balloon artistry. There will also be a game trailer, a bounce house, and a giant inflatable obstacle course. Food and beverage will be available for purchase at the event. We will have a guest speaker from the Church of Latter-day Saints who will speak on Unity. And we will also have a free community information booth that will be available to any local organization that is interested in providing any literature or informational materials. And any interested parties can reach out directly to me for more information. And I have placed some postcards, our marketing collateral on the back table, which has additional information as well. Any questions?
Mercedes, I want to say, first of all, thank you, and go home while you got a cold. Thank you. Yeah.
Now we will open it up to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Dominic Mazzella, President of Village Royale and Agreena Gateway. I'm here to give a $1,000 check reach to the Police Department and the Fire Department, and thanks for their service.
Dominic, excuse me. I want to first say thank you, because this is from my district. I'd like for the acting chief and also the fire chief to come down and accept those $1,000 checks, so that they will be in good hands.
Thank you.
Don't forget, we get pictures. Staff, over here, we get pictures. Yeah. We don't only want your money, we want pictures, too. Thank you. Although the money came from District 2, it's for the whole city. Don't anybody get it wrong, okay? We're going to spin it. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I wanted to say thank you, Commissioner Romulus, for judging our Christmas/Hanukkah/...
All the way.
...Kwanzaa/Festivus Day decorations in Seacrest Estates. Once again, you picked Timothy, who won our Halloween contest, and he's overjoyed to win twice in one year. It set all the rest of the neighbors off on, you know, a little bender to hopefully improve themselves for next year. So they were trying to accuse me of picking him twice. I said, no, it's not me doing the voting, so.
Send them towards me.
Okay. But I hope you notice that we have substantially more decorations. When I moved in five years ago on my street, I was one of two people decorating. And, you know, as you can tell, I'm a force of nature at the best of times, or the worst of times. And we're up to 10 people on my street alone, so we've made a huge turnaround in the neighborhood. And thank you for taking the time to judge this, because it really brings a nice sense of competition. I heard from a lot of people on the Nextdoor app how excited they were in Chapel Hill and some of the other neighborhoods, that we were doing this in our neighborhood. So my goal years ago, when former Commissioner Fitzpatrick was on the diocese, and I know Commissioner McCray and Casello have heard this before, I'm all about, we should have a big decorating contest between all the districts. But, you know, that doesn't seem to be going anywhere. But we got to start little and work our way up. So thank you for bringing this out in our district. So thank you, and Happy New Year, everyone.
Minister Bernard Wright, co-founder of Bernard Wright Ministries, the Robert E. Wells Foundation, and Real Talk Radio, the founder is Jesus the Christ, by whom I'm employed. Let me say that I did not get no type of response and respect me mentioning about the Robert E. Wells Celebration. Thank you, Commissioner McCray, for the 500 last year, and I gave the receipts, that it was well spent. The year before, thank you for the 200, well spent. But I've seen you all give thousands of dollars from your community support fund for things, you know. I don't want to try to compare something as being one relevant than another, but the measure of this, the gravity of this, this historic event, this proclamation is just a piece of paper. I sure appreciate it so very much. I'm so humbled by it. My great-grandfather would never have been, they wouldn't even know who he was. But the thing about it, this celebration that I try to do every year, then I do. I would think that you all would support this CRA, and the City Commission supports Pirate Fest, MLK. What about your own historic event, dealing with your own people in your district that you're seeming to have a lot of problem with today, but I don't understand, because it's so dead over there and so peaceful. We do have these isolated incidents. It does not have nothing to do with the whole of the community. You have a department, a police department, has a job to do. Other than that, we still are a community. And these isolated events takes not away from, this City of Boynton Beach is one of the most peaceful cities of Palm Beach County. I don't care what the statistics say, I know this, that it is peaceful. I'm there every day, all day, and it's so dead, to God be the glory. So I want to know what you all have to say about supporting this Robert E. Wells Celebration coming on, that I want to do at Carolyn Sim Park. And all the paperwork has been submitted. You have everything. And if you haven't got a copy, then that's on Mike Simon. He has some people here today who are very much aware of this, and he should have been in here tonight to talk about this because of the pressing time. So what we got going? Anybody having anything to say?
I have no comments, Mr. Wright. It's in my district, I have no comments right now, but we do have time. If I want to give some of my discretionary funds, we can do it at the next Commission meeting, and that's where it lies with me. In regards to Mrs. Simon not being here, we have the Assistant Director, she's here, and that is something that we do internally, and we have to wait until they meet, and then we meet next Tuesday at the CRA meeting. Perhaps we'll do something then. I'll make the comments for the group.
And I appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Mathi Mukilan, 5102 Mahogany Drive, Boynton. Last month, on the 20th, I had applied for the vacant position in the CRA Advisory Board, and I'd applied for it online, and I did not get any acknowledgement in form of an email stating that the application was received. After a couple of days, I got a call from the clerk saying that there was an issue with my business, and it wasn't registered in Boynton. That was the only information that was given to me. And I was like, okay, let me go to Sunbiz and just make sure that the business is registered in the City of Boynton Beach. And I went to sunbiz.org, and I saw that the business was, business had a principal and mailing address listed with the Boynton Beach address. So this is a home-based business. So I had called the city clerk again and explained to them, and I also emailed her a screenshot of all this information. And then the answer I got was, okay, let's, we'll make it work. And after a few days, we saw the agenda, and the agenda had the vacant position listed, and it said, no, under the applicants, it said none, which meant that, you know, no one applied. So I had to call the city, and, you know, I had to, no one had any information. So I had to come over here, and I had to find that I had to pay taxes for the city and the county, which I did, and finally got that sorted out. And out of all this, I learned that, you know, I mean, there's no streamlined process here, and there's no traceability and transparency that exists for an applicant to find out where or on which point they are with regards to the application process. Like, I applied online, but the online system doesn't tell me, you know, where the application, you know, I mean, what, I mean, what is the state of the application or anything like that? So that's one thing. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is MLK Day coming up this Saturday. We still have issues of racial marginalization of Black and Brown communities, and Black and Brown people stop, being stopped disproportionately at, you know, traffic stops. And slavery is still existing in form of prison worker programs. But MLK Day doesn't focus on civil liberty issues and what Martin Luther King taught. Instead, it's more, I mean, when I look at the itinerary, I mean, I just look at entertainment. There's nothing to teach the community what Martin Luther King fought for. So that's what I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
You know, as, I was going to say, the celebration of unity is to get everyone together. I'm not going to quote his dream speech, but it is that all children should play together, and that is what we're doing within the CRA. And so I'm looking forward to it, and that's, you know, as for all the other issues regarding the Advisory Board, we'll have the clerk look into that and get that back to you this week. Is that?
That appointment hasn't been made yet. I think we're still processing applications. Will we bring it forward, do you think, next meeting, or? Yeah, it would be on the agenda. So it's still, it's being collected along with others, probably on the next agenda for the appointment.
All right. Thank you.
Douglas Harms, Assistant Director, Public Affairs Director for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, 1480 Newth Road, Boynton Beach. I've got three items of agenda I'd like to quickly go over. We offer a free program to the community called Just Serve. It's a perfect segue into the service with Martin Luther King on the 15th. Justserve.org allows you to, if you have service projects within the community, you can post them free with no strings attached, and we will have both our members and members of the community that can go to the JustServe.org website and sign up for volunteer work. And so if you have a project, you can list it. If you need volunteers, we have lots of people that sign up every week looking for something to do in the community. So that's a free program that we offer. Also, we have self-reliance classes that are starting at our church at 1480 Newth Road. We have four areas of focus, starting and growing a business, personal finances, finding a better job, education for a better, for better work. Classes begin January 7th, May 7th, and September 3rd. These classes are free to the general public, and you can contact me for further information. And in addition to that, we also have a family history and genealogy services for those that are interested in the community to do family history. This is a free service that we offer on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday evenings from 6:00 till 9:00 o'clock at night, if you're interested. evenings from 6 till 9 o'clock at night, if you're interested in genealogy. And that's really all I had to offer. If you want to use the Just Serve for your commission for any type of volunteer in any, or any part of the community that you want volunteers, it's a no-string attached program that you can use freely. That's it.
I'd like to say thank you for that information, but at the meeting, that unity day in the park, you will have information there?
We can have information there, absolutely.
Thank you. We do need information there, so that we can get the information out, because we only see there's a few caring people here tonight, but we want everybody to know something. You could bring a handful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more public comments, moving on to administrative. I do not believe we have any applicants, so we're going to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, I would like to reconsider an appointment that I made a couple of weeks ago. I was informed by the individual that they are the current Vice-Chair on the Planning and Development Board, so I'd like to reappoint Kevin Fisher as the regular and move the individual that I appointed at that position for the alternate position instead, if the board would consider that option.
I don't think that's allowed.
We need legal now.
Yeah.
It needs to be carried to the next agenda, enlisted specifically.
You know, and I guess my question is, Jim, is that possible in the sense of that we have the authority to remove, because a regular position to an alternate position, and vice versa?
You can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, that will be on the next agenda. All right. And then I asked, been asked to move up item 13A, Proposed Ordinance Number 17-038, second reading. Jim?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
You're up again.
Sorry.
Proposed Ordinance Number 17-038.
One second. 17038, An Ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Admitting Land Development Regulations, Admitting Chapter 3, Zoning, Article 5, Supplemental Regulations, Section 3, Common Building Apertinences, Freestanding Structures and Site Amenities, Including Walls and Fences, To Increase the Magnitude of Encroachment of Front Porches Into the Building Setback, Providing for Conflict Severability, Codification, and an Effective Date.
Motion to approve. Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please? Yes?
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Romulus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Moving forward to the consent agenda, is there any item that wishes to be pulled?
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passed unanimously. Bits and purchases over 100,000. Proposed Resolution is Number 18-006, Approve Utilizing the Broward Sheriff's Office Contract with Gals for the Purchase of Uniforms for Police and Fire with an Estimated Annual Expenditure of 140,000.
Motion to approve.
Second with discussion.
Yes.
I'd like to ask staff to come up, please. As you walked in, I just want to know, do we do anything with the recycled uniforms, or do we donate them perhaps to organizations? What do we do with them?
By rescue. The uniforms have our emblems embroidered into the materials, so we can't really let them be recycled, because someone may use this in fun of various activity. So, we usually destroy the uniforms. In this case, with this, since we're doing a changeover with vendors, we're gonna keep the older uniforms for a period of time, and then as they get worn out, then we'll destroy them. But, we can't allow the, those uniforms to be recycled, like with the emblems, names, and all that stuff on them.
So, even if it's just the material, not necessarily the emblems, or can the material be reused by any organization, not necessarily organization, but just for the...
We can't allow our patches and stuff to end up in the public domain and have the other people use them.
Understood.
So, we have to destroy them.
Thanks for clarification.
Good evening, Acting Chief Kelly Harris. We actually do have an opportunity to recycle some of our pants. We donate to Santa Lucius High School, so they get to use them for their programs. So, but again, with the same thing with the fire chief, if it has our patches on it, we actually have to destroy them.
That's good to know. Thank you for sharing that information, Chief.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion passed unanimously. Moving on to public hearing, Proposed Ordinance Number 17-037.
An Ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, Admitting Ordinance 02013, To Rezone a Parcel of Land Described Here and Commonly Referred to as Eden Ridge From Single Family Residential District R1AA to Single Family Residential District R1A, Providing for Conflict Severability and an Effective Date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. Any discussion from the public? Yes. You need them to be sworn in, Jim?
Yes, this is a quasi-dugistical proceeding. Anybody who intends to testify, please raise your right hand. That includes the applicant and the applicant's representative. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Mike Fitzpatrick, 175 Southwest 2nd Street. This, when this came before, this is listed as coming before the City Commission with no recommendation. It does point out, due to the lack of support of the motion to approve, so this died for lack of a second. So, this actually, if it had been voted on, would have been voted down 6 to 1 against the rezoning. The, there's a comprehensive land use element in the comprehensive plan. Policy 1.12.2 is listed in the backup, and it says, "The city shall continue to maintain and improve the character of existing single-family low-density neighborhoods. By preventing the conversion to higher densities, except when consistent with adjacent land use, contributes to the implementation of adopted redevelopment plans or further to city-affordable housing." This zoning does none of those three things. The current zoning surrounding it is, to the north and east is the Seacrest Scrub, an environmental preserve, which means it's not just low density, it's zero density. To the due west of it is St. Joseph's Episcopal Church and School, and that has, again, zero density. Now, to the south is property owned by Mary Law, and that is also R1AA. So, that is with the current density. So, by lowering the density, or lowering the use to a higher density, you're creating a donut, where all the surrounding area is of a, definitely a lower density level. So, it says, after that, the backup says, "The proposed rezoning will eliminate a non-conforming use from a single, from a single-family neighborhood." This is not an accurate statement. The current non-conforming use was a, the Siler House and outbuildings, and now, I guess, this spend, some of them are used for rental, but even without the rezoning, there'll be bulldozes, and will still be there, will be single-family homes, R1AA. So, there's no real need for changing the zoning. And the other thing that bothers me about this is this establishes a precedent where you can leap over contiguous zoning and just spot zone anywhere. So, what's prevent this R1AA being downgraded to R1A? Is this also could happen in, why not, couldn't this happen in Chapel Hill, which is as close to this property as the R1A, which is being used as the reason to do it? So, to me, this just looks like another attack, incremental attack on low-density zoning in the city of Boynton Beach, and I would encourage you not to approve the rezoning. Thank you.
Mary Law, 3481 South Seacrest Boulevard in Boynton Beach. To the City Commission, I am the neighbor south and adjacent to 3479 South Seacrest Boulevard, which is being presented tonight to be rezoned from R1AA to R1A. I am also zoned R1AA. I have lived on this property for probably 40 years. This property is south and adjacent to the Seacrest Scrub. The east half of 3479 and the east one-quarter of my property, 3481, are home to the gopher tortoises and other animals which travel to and from the Seacrest Scrub. Now, the new owners are attempting to end this open space for the animals and the native plants with eight to 12 buildings and turn it into a mostly asphalt and concrete area. In my opinion, there is no reason to change the zoning, as this is the zoning for the area, and to change it would change the neighborhood, and it will be considered spot zoning for you to do so. It will also turn one and a half acres of native scrub into mostly concrete and asphalt next to the Seacrest Scrub, which is Boynton's version of New York Central Park. We need to value this prize that we preserved in 1993. If you decide that some type of development has to be on this 3479 site, please place these additional conditions of approval on the development. One, the developer to work with the Seacrest Scrub, which is also known as ERM, Environmental Resource Management, and to return all the gopher tortoises on 3479 and on 3481 to the Seacrest Scrub, which was their original home. The developer could donate some of the money they plan to spend relocating the gopher tortoises to ERM, and also donate their two retention areas to ERM in order to provide more room for the gopher tortoises. Two, require the developer to provide the city with the following: A tree survey and a tree management plan. B, a native Florida ecosystem survey or inventory, parentheses, city approval is needed. Three, require the developer install a fence and a native hedge between my property and their property in order to protect, A, the Seacrest Scrub animals and the 3479 animals which are on my property, and B, to protect my property from his use during development and from being used by his occupants. The fourth suggestion for approval, keep all the lighting from shining into the Seacrest Scrub. Five, place a fence with a two-to-four-foot barrier into the ground on the north, east, and south sides of its property to prevent animals from gaining access to the property. The review and the approval by ERM and the South Florida Water Management of this proposed development. Also, the city forester to review and approve the development. This eight-home site plan is the maximum number of units the city will allow on this site. Eight, this site is of high ecological importance and should be given the highest priority for protection. So, tonight, I recommend you postpone your approval until all of the above reports are completed and approved by the city, and the approval of all the agencies is obtained. I have one other comment to make. I pulled up your agenda for tonight, and I just would like to correct something on that. The developer did contact me, as he did a few times, about different issues, most of which don't really pertain to me. But, he did ask if I wanted to go in with him for this rezoning. He didn't say how or anything like that, but prior to that, he had, there were other issues that he was concerned about. The survey, my mailbox, the concrete barrier that I put up, the concrete block barrier that I put up between the properties. So, when he, he wrote me an email saying about going in with this, I just didn't want him to try to push me into selling the property to them or doing something I wouldn't like. And they didn't say it was gonna be for free, so I just did not respond. I don't want you to see me as an obnoxious neighbor in some lights, although I really am. But, I hope you will consider my suggestions. I'm here not for myself. I can handle whatever comes down, but I'm trying to protect the animals in the scrub. Thank you.
Hello, Steven Cito, 3404 Southeast 2nd Street, Boynton Beach, Florida. I just want to reflect that I believe, along with a lot of the neighbors in the community, that this is a terrible idea. It's a really poor proposal, especially in the location, as we won over last meeting. For about two weeks, as I drive north and south on Seacrest, passing the house, I see seven bins just sitting there full of garbage. Check it out tomorrow, year round. They're just garbage, because first off, whatever the situation there is, every house can have a garbage can, a blue recycling bin, and a yellow recycling bin. The garbage trucks aren't gonna be able to go in there, so they have to naturally pick it up off Seacrest. So, if you have eight houses there, times potentially three, you could have 24 piles of trash, and then bulk two. So, that's just an obvious observation. This proposal's basically attempting to eventually push out Ms. Law, so that they can have five acres to destroy, which we can't afford that, because this is pristine land. The animals, as you know, come, the birds fly, they see a big chunk of land untouched, they want to go there, that's their house, and, you know, butterflies that travel from Canada to Chile, all sorts of things like that. So, if you guys checked out on Google Maps, the adjacent neighborhood below, there's only five houses that would fit. They're, they're just squeezing more. The Article 27 about that the city has the power to decide the fate of this area, I wish you guys would consider that strongly, that it's in your hands, the future of the city and this location. Also, planning and zoning, at that meeting, they voted against this proposal, and I believe that that council's there to guide everybody in the right decision. And I have a question that, why is their, their opinion on the idea, why is it rejected by you? You know, why aren't you guys kind of listening to them? Because it would be a poor plan to go ahead and develop all these houses along the preserve. And then the last thing is, the letters of notification for the public, there was a discrepancy at the last meeting, nobody had any answers, it was a big confusion. So, what is the outcome on that? How many letters were sent out? And then, if, let's say, the legal amount of letters were received by the city, the community, and everybody came out, would it have even made a difference if, let's say, a thousand people came and spoke against this proposal? Would you actually listen to what the community believes? Once again, I hope that you guys have been to the area, because if not, we can describe it all we want, but to actually see it, and then one day it'll be destroyed and gone forever, that's something to think about. So, I hope you guys would consider to reject this proposal, at least... So, I hope you guys would consider to reject this proposal, at least restrict it instead of kind of helping it go by putting extra houses where there shouldn't be. And if you would at least think about it before saying yes, and get all the facts straight before we can come to a conclusion. Thank you.
Jim, you got to swear me. When you swore people, I was out in the lobby.
Affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. Thank you. David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane. I think—I'm going to be here as the chair of the P&amp;D Board, not as a resident. First, I'd like to correct the speaker, and I'll take the blame for it. Our board did not vote on—it was a motion that was made and not seconded, so there was really technically no action by our board. It wasn't declined or accepted. One might infer that we were against it, but there was technically no vote against it. Some of the things I'm going to talk about—actually, I spoke to Mary Law about some of these things, and I'd like you to take them into consideration. They really weren't brought up at our meeting, because it never got to that point. First of all, no homes of the people who live in that area directly abut the property that's going to be developed. Five homes abut Mary Law's property, and eight about the scrub to the south. So, none of them abut the property that's going to be developed. In other words, nobody's taken away the scrub from them. And at our meeting, I said that the train had already left the station, because twenty odd years ago, when the scrub was purchased, for some reason, the property that's going to be developed was not included. So, either they didn't want to, they didn't have the money, they felt it wasn't important enough, but it was not purchased. And this property owner has development rights, and it's up to you to decide whether you want to let him build seven or build eight homes. I don't think the traffic is going to be increased all that much; I said that at the P&amp;D Board meeting. I don't think people are going to pull their garbage cans down to Seacrest anywhere than they do where I live or where anybody else in the commission lives. And one of the homes—that the previous speaker, actually, he actually backs up and abuts the scrub property. He does abut where it's going to be developed. And I'm sure, looking at the Google Maps from the property appraiser—I'm sorry—from the property appraiser maps, the line of sight is obscured by Mary Law's property and the trees that she might have on there, to be able to see what's going to be built there. But again, what I would ask you to do is—and I wish it had come up at our meeting—is that you ask for the developer to create a landscape buffer between Ms. Law's property and their property. That you also ask—and Mary mentioned this earlier—a fence that goes two or three feet down to prevent the gopher tortoises from migrating to the property that's going to be developed. That you ask for a guarantee that no more than the eight homes will be developed. And in all honesty, I don't see the problem with the eighth home, in all reality. And that you also ask for a real and genuine oversight on the relocation of these gopher tortoises, so that there's no question that whatever's on the property that's going to be developed, they have been saved and relocated. I know that the developer offered to give $1,000 for each home, towards—I know it was art in public places or the parks or whatever. And that—don't take that money from the developer; have him do with that money the landscape buffer, the putting of the fence between the rear of the property, just like—I believe that's what they have by the scrub and the railroad, a fence that goes down so they can't migrate over the railroad tracks. And these conditions, if you want to call them that, are not onerous or costly, but I think they would satisfy Ms. Law and maybe not everybody who's against this. But I think that—I think you should let him do the eight homes, but I think you should ask for these additional conditions and have him agree to them publicly and in writing. Thank you.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way. I have to disagree with Chairman Katz. I did not get sworn in, Mr. Chairoff. Did you need to swear me in?
Yes, you and anybody else who thinks that they might want to talk on this subject matter, do it now. There's no charge. You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. My first deal of 2018. I just want to say—I—as you know, I'm all against density all the time. I really hope that you—I know you're going to go ahead and do the eighth home, and I'm just talking to the wind, but I would ask that you to consider the fact that one more house does make a difference, one more family or person does make a difference. Every additional building does make a difference in the heat trap, the—what are they called? Urban heat zones? They do make a difference. And no one has addressed—and I don't know, maybe you want to add this as a condition of approval—what's being done when they go to stamp down the foundation to create these houses? They use huge pounding machines, and I know the damage that these machines have done to my family's properties when they did 500 Ocean. You know, our 98-year-old building has lots of nice little cracks in it that we've had to deal with, as well as changing—you know, updating our foundation just because of the building construction across the street. What's being done to make sure the animals are not being hurt while they're pounding down the foundation? And that takes days or weeks or however long it takes. All this construction noise, you can't tell me that's not going to stress these animals out. What is being done to prevent all this from happening? I'm sorry, they were here first. This was their house before it became your house, before it could potentially become my house. You know, if not us, who? If we're not going to do the right thing, who's going to do the right thing? We only have one chance to keep this pristine and beautiful, and I just think that the one and only person who's being most impacted by this is telling you she does not want this. You see the neighbors that have come out; they're saying they don't want this. And why are you pushing this forward when no one wants it except the one person? And yes, you do have the right to build. He does have that right, but that doesn't make it right. And adding one more house does matter. So, I'd ask you to respectfully consider leaving it the way it is at the seven. And if you're going to do the eight—which I know you're going to, because, you know, I don't run the world, you do—I would ask that you do something about the impact of all those pounding machines, and is there some way to mitigate this and keep these poor animals from being—their houses collapsing in on top of them, even though they're 50 or 100 yards away, just because of the pounding of the foundation? So, thank you very much.
Good evening, and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Bradley Miller, Miller Land Planning, and here representing the applicant. Second reading here of this rezoning. Just a couple of things that I want to touch on. Actually, Chairman Katz summed up a lot of it, of the property rights that's available to this owner that's always been there in that zoning district. The property was for sale for about a year and a half, and actually, it went to an auction for sale. Nobody even showed up at the auction to buy that property. So, our clients, after that period of time, came in and purchased the property to develop it. So, and they're going to develop it. So, it's—as using Mr. Katz's words, it's either seven or eight. And coming down to it, we feel like the eight units are something that's a little more consistent with the neighborhood. It's interesting, as some of the arguments of the neighbors here are these homes right up against the scrub. And I know Mr. Sito's home is right up against the scrub. So, it's a little contradictory to me to hear those arguments. There's some misstatements of we can only fit five houses in there. The block that they're talking about, there's actually six lots, and that's on the west side of Hurst Street. There's two more on the other side, so it's the same number. The garbage pickup, the city wouldn't let us design something that you can't get a garbage truck and a fire truck down that road and turn around. The garbage trucks are going to be in front of the homes like they are in every other subdivision. So, all of these things are out there and kind of being thrown around to cloud the matter, I guess. Let me get to Ms. Law's comments. And we do understand that she's there, and I know my client has spoken to her through this process. She and I have known each other back to when I first started my business 20 years ago. So, the conditions that she asked for, we actually, at the last meeting, agreed to all of those. We have to take care of the gopher tortoises. It's a state and federally regulated requirement. The lights shining in the scrub is already regulated by code. The hedge and the fence on our common property line, between our property line and Ms. Law's will agree to that. The tree survey, I guess if staff feels like it's necessary to have a tree survey as we go through the permitting process, I don't see any problem doing that. I think I got them all. Returning the gopher tortoises back to the scrub. Actually, the requirements, as I understand them, is that they don't go back there, because they're likely to try to get back to that original property. So, they're relocated to another location that's part of the whole process and the permitting process for those gopher tortoises. So, overall, we're just really not opposed to any of those requirements and willing to do that.
Questions from the board?
I guess, yeah. I guess that's—I'll wrap up with that and address—
What is your response to this concern about using the adjacent property, the neighbor's property, during construction? Where is that concern coming from, that your client would use her property?
I'm not sure, and actually, I didn't hear that tonight. We can't. We completely stay on our property. As far as the construction and compaction, there's going to be construction and compaction for the road and the foundations, the same as the roads and the foundations of the homes that are already there. So—
How many tortoises have you found on the property? How many burrows are there?
The report that's part of your package found 24 burrows. Out of those 24, as part of the report, there's a little map, and there's about a half a dozen of those are actually off our property and kind of drift into Ms. Law's property. So, it's hard to put a number of actual tortoises that are there, but there's 24 burrows that have been identified.
Now, just from my own information, when a burrow is identified, how do they know there's a tortoise living in that burrow? How's that determined?
I think it's the activity of the dirt, the in and the out. They actually found 25 burrows, and they designated one of them as being inactive. So, I'm not sure if they—I don't think they stay there all day and watch for the activity. But I know from other projects, just seeing the activity of the dirt going in and out of the burrow itself is an indication, but not my expertise.
What kind of cost is involved in relocating these tortoises in your particular case?
You have to go speak to the podium.
Half of it. That's good.
One out of threes of them.
I— Steven Newman, I reside in Delray Beach. I did it, okay? Thank you. I don't actually know the exact answer to that. I do know two things. One, we will absolutely—we are mandatory by law to do everything that is told to us with Fish and Wildlife to make sure that we take care of these gopher tortoises. I'm an animal lover myself, and I would never want to hurt anything. But I will tell you, it's not a cheap process, but it's a process that we understand that we need to do.
All right, thank you. Bradley, a couple of quick questions. The scrub here, as I—
Excuse me, if Mr. Newman's going to leave. You didn't give us your—you said you reside in Delray. That is not an address. I'm just—
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, sorry. 16091 Quaid Vista Circle.
Thank you.
Sorry.
You do reside. Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
No problem. Thank you. The developer, we're actually going to put more trees in place than what's currently there? That's what it looks like to me. It looks like we're going to actually add some landscaping as far as tree-wise.
It will. The lots themselves are going to be required to have trees on them that will actually increase the number of trees from what's there. Right now, the—a good majority of the—especially the western half of the property has been cleared. Another thing for clarification of—I think a statement was made that the eastern acre and a half is scrub. Well, it's not scrub. It's private property that's adjacent to the scrub.
Okay. And my last question is, the applicant, as was my understanding, they approached Ms. Law on the rezoning issue just as a courtesy. They were going to go through the rezoning process and ask her if she wanted to be part of that process. Is that correct? There's no—
That's correct, and at the encouragement of your staff, they asked us to reach out and do that, and he did.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
My comment is that it was stated by one of the speakers that this proposal that we're trying to push through stated that we're trying to push Mrs. Law off of her property. This is not the intent. Thank you. Just wanted to have it corrected. Thank you.
Ramon List?
I don't have questions, but I just want to just clarify and make sure that it's reiterated for the public that you are in agreement with some of these proposals. And at our last meeting, I did ask for some of these things, so I'm glad to see them coming up again. So, first and foremost, you're willing to provide the hedge and the barrier, natural and artificial, between you and Ms. Law's property, correct?
Correct.
You're also willing to put another division between the scrub and your property, correct?
Correct, and we'll coordinate that through the permitting process with Fish and Wildlife.
And it will possibly go deep enough to potentially allow for—or not allow for—tortoises to come back along the property?
Sure.
Okay. And what about the lighting proposal that was made tonight? Are we able to have lighting aiming away from the park?
The lighting—the only place that there will be lighting is on the street itself, a street light. The code requires that no lighting spill over the property lines anyway. So, first of all, it's going to be on the southern side of the property, away from the scrub. And then, the code restricts that it be shining into the property. It restricts that they're shielded away. So, the light would be going down onto the road for the safety of the road and the sidewalk that's required to be there, not into the scrub.
And also, just for clarification's sake, I see—you—is that your—it's not up—okay.
No, I'm sure they have it there, but—
Right. I just want to have you reiterate how our fire and our Public Works trucks would be able to navigate through the property line.
At the end of the road, there is a 50-by-50 turnaround. It's what they consider a T-type turnaround. So, they can come in and make the turn into—as they're coming east along the road, they turn into the 50-foot leg that goes to the north, they back up into the 50-foot leg that continues to the east, and they drive back out.
That means that any garbage cans, any recycling cans can be picked up in front of the homeowners' homes, not having to be put out on Seacrest?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
My question is, is so what exactly conditions of approval is your client accepting? Is it all that is on this piece of paper that we got from Mary Law today, or the ones that we got from Mary Law yesterday, last meeting?
I don't have copies of either of those.
Okay.
So, I was writing vigorously as she was talking about them.
Yes.
Let me—and again, we're not really opposed to any of those conditions, and I'd offered them up before the—thank you. But the—I guess, just as a matter of the—is it—are we allowed to condition a rezoning?
No.
You could have—well, let's put it this way. There are certain stipulations that you can make publicly tonight that will be binding on your client. If you want to construe those as conditions, they are conditions. But there's no back and forth between the commission and you, as representative of your applicant, to condition the rezoning particularly on things that are not otherwise code-based, meaning if they're not found in the code and they're not a code requirement, they can't be a condition of approval. Is that clear, or not?
For example, the limit of eight structures on the property is that— For example, the limit of eight structures on the property, is that a?
We are in the last meeting? Confirm that.
So, that's the question that I have for the attorney. Is that something, sort of a condition allowed?
Well, that's not a rezoning issue. That's a site development issue. So, that's not appropriate for the condition of approval.
So, and so that's kind of, you know, my concern. So, if the applicant asks for, states it, are they being bound if they are doing the site plan, however? Another developer could change that. Is that correct, Jim?
That is correct.
You know, it's a tough situation that we're here for, the extra property, you know, putting good faith into the applicant that he is going to do what he is, because otherwise, if we do rezonate, then the applicant is bound. However, he's not bound if he sells it to another person or another entity. And so, I guess.
If I could address the eight lots, there's more to it than just eight lots. It's, there's minimum lot widths that have to be complied with. There's minimum lot sizes of the area that I have to comply with. That's what fits and continues to comply. So, getting more than that is, the variances would be required. You'd have to come back. Anybody else would have to come back and request additional relief from you as a commission to be able to achieve that.
So, I, so the, I'm guessing the minimum lot requirements is 60 square feet, or 60 feet frontage compared to the 75 for R1AA?
Correct.
And so, I don't, I don't have it, but under your opinion that they cannot get more than eight properties, even if they did have the 60?
You still have to, I think it's 7,500 square feet of minimum lot size that you have to have still. So, by the time you take out the width of the buffer on our south property line adjacent to Ms. Law's property, the width of the right-of-way for the road, the width of the road itself, the sidewalk, that's where the lot line begins. So, yeah, there's only so much property there in a north-south direction and an east-west direction. So, yes, the lots as designed are wider than the 60-foot minimum, but most of them are very close to the, actually, they're larger because you can't fit in another one to make it work.
And I guess, Jim, my question to you is that we can make any of these conditions conditional on a site plan improvement?
Well, that's going to have to occur anyway, independent of this. This is simply a request for rezoning.
So, okay.
So, there will be a follow-up.
Actually, for a single family, there is no site plan process. It goes straight to a plat.
And so, that's kind of what, you know, the concern is, is that how do we guarantee what we want to see happening? Is there a way for that, Jim?
Mayor, the best way to answer that is the guarantees that are available to the commission are found in the Code of Ordinances. So, if staff could point to specific provisions of the code that rise to the level of warranting conditions, those are okay. Beyond that, I think you could see the dilemma that any applicant for approval before the commission would have, is they're not in exactly the best bargaining position when they sit here before the commission. You have extraordinary power, which of course can be abused if pushed too far, which I'm not encouraging you to do. I think that staff has addressed conditions of approval in the past. Staff has a report in the agenda package this evening, and if you find that that supports the rezoning, that's what the commission should do without attempting to extract these additional elements from the applicant. That's the best way to stay out of litigation over this rezoning application.
So, you know, so my only thing is, is that unless we see a site, so we cannot see a site plan approval. Is that correct?
Mike, you want to address?
Yeah. I just wanted to double-check on that, is that, once we zone it to R1A, that's it for the board?
If I could, if you could repeat that question. I've heard it mentioned that there is a plat process. You would be blessing the plat, and staff would eventually be delivering it to you.
Okay.
That's going to show the number of lots that are being approved.
Mm-hmm.
And it's also going to explain that, yes, those lot restrictions are the most important thing that they're looking at. If they're underneath the maximum density allowed by the landage classification, which they are, those minimum lot sizes, frontages are really critical to them as to how many they can fit on that property. And there aren't too many ways that they can fit those lots on that parcel given its configuration and size.
So, under your opinion as well, that the eight is the maximum amount allowed?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, I guess the other conditions or requests that were made regarding, you know, the oversight of the gopher tortoises, if that we could get a report back after all of that is done, you know, that the fence goes two feet into the ground? Is that something that we have any say, or is that just a request to the applicant?
Fences improvements such as that will have to be permitted. We will obtain the relocation information again at time of permit. We will have that in hand.
But, you know, the fence permit only does not require the fence to go down two feet into the ground?
That's correct.
And so, that would be up to the applicant to make that, to incur that?
Yes, we are hearing that.
And so, the other thing is that, was that even allowed in our code for fences?
Go as deep as they want to dig it.
Okay. And so, this is, you know, it's, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but it's kind of like we'd have to do the act of good faith in order, because we do not have the site plan approval.
I think it's important, too, several conditions. I was, as Bradley was, writing frantically as I was hearing different comments made or wish list items, if you will, from some speakers. We just need to be really clear right now as to what the expectations are. Yes, I've heard two different buffers, or I've heard a buffer, is that on the south side of this parcel? I've heard the fencing, which is deeper than normal to prevent burrowing underneath it. We are concerned with the number of lots. Is there anything more?
Yeah. Well, no, we're asking him again.
Motion to approve.
All right. And so, before we call the vote, you know, Jim, the only question is, a lot of people, the applicant by their agent, Bradley, have said some things under oath. Are they bound by what they've said under oath?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. So, I'm going to rely on what they've said under oath in their honor moving forward, that everything that we can have stated with what Mary Law says and what the people ask regarding the rezoning of it is a curse. And so, we have it first and second. Is there anything left from the board?
Yes.
I, go ahead, Commissioner.
Excuse me, before we vote, Mr. Newman, I want to make sure that you get my copy so you know what is there, okay?
I received one. Thank you.
Commissioner McRae?
I just do want to mention that we can't hold the applicant liable to all the things that are listed on Ms. Law's comment page here, because not all these are relevant to what is, what we're discussing. So, as he does have a copy, I believe that it's really only three, four, and five, and seven that are actually relevant to tonight's discussion.
And, yeah, if one is possible regarding the retention area to the secrete scrub to ERM?
I believe they're already working with Florida Fish and Wildlife, so do we have to include ERM as well?
That area is actually a drainage area.
Right.
So, we need that for our development plan.
Right. So, that it cannot be part of the scrub?
No.
Okay. That's why I wanted to double-check, that that one's not possible. Okay. Is there any further comments from the board? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McRae?
Yes.
Commissioner McRae? Aye.
Mr. Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
No.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, proposed resolution number 18-007. Approve and ratify the reopen and amendment articles, group insurance and wages, the collective bargain agreement between the Boynton Beach firefighters and paramedics, IAAF Local 1891 in the city of Boynton Beach.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those oppose. Motion passes unanimously. Next, I request approval of $300 of my community support funds to be donated to NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those oppose. Seeing none, motion passed unanimously. New item, item C, the arts agenda. This is basically to see if we, not necessarily to form a consensus, but to have options available to us for February. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
Sure. I wasn't trying to get too deep into the ordinance, but I would just like to request that it be stipulated that when developers bring potential public arts to the arts director and subsequently the advisory board, that they present a minimum of three options. I know that, I'm sure there's some marginal cost associated with asking an artist to come up with three options instead of one, but I think the value of choice outweighs the cost. And if I know, what little I know about artists is that there's not a one in the world that only has one idea. So, I'm sure that any artist we contract with would have a pile of ideas waiting to bring to life. So, I'd just like to see the actual choice and options be brought to the advisory board.
Let me go.
Yep.
My take is that I feel, and I know, that the art commission here in this city has done a fantastic job. I might not agree, but everything that they have done, but I want to say that everything, my consent is that I'll let everything remain the way it is, let the art commission make that decision, bring whatever they want to back to this, and then we vote on it. That's the way I stand. I'm just saying, for years, we have not had a problem until, I guess, now, but everything has been running smooth with me.
So, one of the things that I'd like to bring up is that back in 2015, we had, passed the amendment resolution because some projects didn't lend itself to the art tax ordinance. And that's kind of where, I like to say that I'm not happy that we had that resolution passed, so that we have areas that are exempt. I do understand that not all, you know, having a piece of art on a property that nobody else sees is not necessarily beneficial to the community. However, the 30%, or three tenths of 1%, I'm sorry, is beneficial for the administrative costs. You know, as the program has been going on for over a decade now, one of the things that in the city that needs help is our ecological environment, because the city does own vacant lots that are designated parks that have not been developed. You know, if we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on art, I'd like to see if a portion of that, so that instead of seven tenths of 1% is required to be spent on art, that we have the option available so that maybe three tenths of 1% or a quarter of a percent is spent on our Parks and Recs fund. Similar to what we approved today for the kayak launch project, I feel that with all the new developments that are coming into Boynton Beach, especially our town square, this was a way that we can fund the eco-park over in Quantum Park, and development of, and other parks that we have in the city. And so, I'd like to ask the board if they see this as something that we can ask the staff to bring, to see if we can amend the ordinance to allow for a portion of the seven tenths to be used for our parks and recreation as a driver of, almost an ecotourism industry.
Don't we have something, Parks Impact Fee now that people pay, developers pay?
Only per unit.
Okay. But there is a fee. So, now you're asking that this, what you're, if I'm getting correctly here, that art fee that developers pay of this 1% of the total gross or whatever they're putting up that goes to the art, you're asking a percentage of the percent to go towards the parks also?
Seven tenths is allowed, is required to be spent on art.
Correct.
Most of the time, that artists are not from Boynton Beach or in Palm Beach County. So, if we can keep that money within the city limits of the seven tenths of 1%, for example, what is it, that new assisted living facility by Hunter's Run is going to cost around $20 million. So, that's $200,000 in the art tax. Three tenths is going to the city for administrative, seven tenths is not, which is a little bit over, was it, $130,000? If they can spend $30,000 to $40,000 of that dollars within the city and not just on art, I'd like to have them have that option available. Basically, all I'm asking is, is that does the board feel that it's okay to have an option available that instead of just an art tax, it's an art and environment tax?
I'm going to go and weigh in what Commissioner Casello said. We already have a parks.
But that doesn't go.
Sir, I understand what you're saying, but my take is that we're already saying Park Impact Fee. I'm not in favor of doing anything except letting it stay the way it is. That's my, that's my take.
Absolutely. However, that, those extra, that development does not pay any money into the Parks Impact Fee. So, it's only every new unit, we get $600.
I understand that, sir, but like I said, we have, everything has been going well now. I don't see any point we putting more water in the, to the well that we don't have, okay? I'm happy the way it is.
All right. That could, we could have that discussion, Mayor, if, you know, if we have some more, the artist brings us more options other than, you know, this is the piece of art that they've decided on, you know, bring some options to us. I would have no problem in probably going with something that you're suggesting.
So, that one of the options would be money going into the environment?
Right.
Okay. Vice Mayor, is that okay with you?
I mean, I don't fundamentally oppose the idea. Obviously, I wouldn't mind more money available for our parks. I don't know if, you know, incorporating it into the arts, I'm not for it or I'm not against it. It just, it could become, it pits them against each other, I guess. I don't know if that's a bad thing, but it, I could see it detracting from the public arts program, because depending on the property developer, you know, they might say, look, I don't care about public arts, but I want to put money. I don't, I don't know at this point if it's a good or a bad thing necessarily.
So, you're, sir, you're okay if staff comes in?
Yeah, I can look at ideas.
Yeah. Commissioner McRae, do you have input?
Mayor, it looks like you've put a lot of work and thought into this, so thank you for that. And though I do believe what you're saying, I would like to see it all and have staff, of course, give us a report. That way, I can, you know, be able to read the information and make a decision for myself. It does sound good, but again, I would like to see and understand where it all is coming from, where the funding comes from and how it all works. I am in support of what Commissioner Katz is proposing. I believe there's nothing wrong with being allowed options and, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Katz, there's nothing wrong with being allowed some options, and I think that would also help to give the arts board, the arts commission, the flexibility to make decisions that potentially allow for the public to have some more engagement as well. So, I would be in favor of what Vice Mayor Katz is proposing.
All right. So, I guess for our February meeting, we'd like to see the staff bring back three options available for the arts commission from the artists of the developer's choice, and look into the possibility of having a portion of the art fee for environmental purposes and what that might include. Yes, Commissioner McRae?
Thank you. When they bring, let me make sure I'm understanding what you all are trying to do. When they bring back three renditions?
Yes.
Who will make the decision, the commission or the arts department?
Arts commission.
Commission, okay.
Okay.
Just a, a thought to expand on what you might be trying to do for staff. You know, we run into every time there's a piece of property that's redeveloped or something new is done there, whether it was Hunter's Run, you know, in the past, or the golf course that just came before us. And they kind of, a lot of times, they tend to begrudge the idea that they have to dedicate a percentage of the cost to public arts on their own private property, and they might otherwise not be inclined to spend that money on quote-unquote "public arts" that's restricted to their private property. Is it possible to consider some way that for these developments that are redeveloping and none of their property is actually public, so their quote-unquote "public art" is not public, that they could perhaps, like, buy out of it, maybe pay 75%, and that money would go towards either just the arts budget for any public art, so they could buy out for a discount, or it could go towards the potential for park-related stuff? Because I know they tend to begrudge, if I'm redoing my clubhouse in my private property, I have to spend X amount on public art, but no one from the public can see it, and we don't necessarily plan to spend it. If we could buy out for a cheaper amount, maybe that's a way to.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. And so, currently, it's, if I'm not mistaken, it's three tenths of the 1% goes to the city's art department, where seven tenths is required to be spent on the art. And so, I'd like to, you know, basically not have the exceptions in that the three tenths still goes to the arts department, and that any art that is no longer visible to the public, that that could go to a Parks and that that could go to a Parks and Rec fee.
Something just because that comes up?
Yeah. As a buyout, or as an additional, so that they are not required to spend seven tenths of the 1 percent on stuff that the public does not see. And so--
So this would only apply to private property?
That's just my thought in, in the moment for, for possibilities.
Correct. It's kind of in the, it's not going to be ever, you know, we're not voting necessarily on something in February. It's basically asking staff to bring us the option so that we can move forward with this art tax, because we will be taxing ourselves for the city hall, and the police station, and all these other items, because it is not part of any of the exemptions. And so I just want to make sure that we are going to be paying this tax. And so if we want to spend all seven tenths of it on the art, that's one thing, or if we want to give ourselves the options available. And so I do like the idea of having the artists bring up a few renderings to the arts commission before item is commissioned. Yes?
Let me ask a question of staff. Does the artist bring up renderings now? Do they just come up with one and say, this is what I'm going to put here? Lori?
It depends on the, the structure of the, there's a process called the Call to Artist, where it's almost like an RFP that we put out, that if there's a theme, or, and I'm not giving the art community the justice probably in my interpretation, but I think Debbie's on vacation, but they'll, they'll describe what the, the type of setting it is for the artist to then, you know, develop a concept of what's appropriate for that project per se. They don't necessarily now, so they'll all, you'll say you have five people, that'll submit five different artists, you'll get five different renderings, and the arts commission considers those, picks the one that they think is the most appropriate. So I think the difference now will be that we're going to ask, and that will affect the Call to Artist process, and I need to ask Debbie exactly how, but that a public artist to submit would then submit three ideas versus one idea, and then the arts commission will then see which artist they want to go with, and then pick one of the options. I think it's that simple, but I really do need to confer with Debbie.
I think we need to confer, because I'm just saying, if we got five artists presenting, you already got options to choose from. And I'm just saying, like we said, this is just for discussion. I need to see something in writing.
And that's, and, you know, and I don't know the exact circumstances off the top of my head of when the Call to Artist, that isn't always utilized, depending on the project. And then, so then, say on the 500 Ocean, you had the, they commissioned an artist themselves, they had the dollar threshold they had to meet, and then they, this, they came in with this rendering or this decision, and the arts commission ultimately approved it. So in that case, say they would have, it wouldn't necessarily be a competitive process, but they would provide three renderings of three different pieces that they would want to put there versus the one. So that would provide some choice. And there's a cost related to that, yes, to the artist.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll bring that back on the next agenda item with, like Commissioner Romulus asked for, kind of what the whole impact on the program is.
All right. Thank you. The next is the housing authority, Palm Beach County Housing Authority. I asked staff, and they said that there is 75 properties that the housing authority has. Not all of them are vacant lots. Some of them are single-family homes where the person pays rent, where the Palm Beach County, and I was told at the meeting, the Palm Beach County Housing Authority gives, I don't know what it's called, but 10 percent of the rent to the county for their taxes, and then another trickle-down effect happens to the city. I don't know if that actually occurs or not, but I don't assume it's being much. And so what I'm kind of asking for the board is that, would you be supportive of a resolution that states that we're, we do not want the, we want the housing authority to, you know, sell the, the properties that are in there, the single-family homes that are in, that they currently hold, and do not pay any taxes to a private developer, to the homeowners, so that we can start collecting taxes on them, and that the vacant lots be allowed to be put up for sale, so that either the city, or the CRA, or a private developer can buy those properties, so that something can be done, and that we're not just waiting until the end of another study occurs. Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. My take is, I understand what you're saying, and I'm fully on board, because we got a lot of vacant properties that need something to be done. But just like I said before, they don't have a director, and I'm just saying, you know, and for us to do a resolution might be premature, but I would like whoever the director to come in is, that they sit down with this city, a representative from this city, and find out what are they intent to do with vacant property here in this Boynton, so that we know where we're going until we get that person in. I'm just saying, I think, you know, it's like mute, for us to say, we want you all to do this, this, and this, and we don't have anybody at the helm right now.
There is someone at the helm.
There's someone at the helm?
They have an interim executive director, similar to what we had with the CRA.
I'd like to see the director not at interim, I'm sorry.
So you want to wait until there's--
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think we can start the dialogue. I don't know if we're ready to pass any kind of resolutions, but I think that dialogue should happen.
Okay.
You can expedite that, and we'll be ahead of the curve when we actually get a director up there, but definitely start the dialogue.
And so what we can get is consensus for city staff to speak with the interim executive director, to see what is going on within the, the properties within the city?
Start the dialogue.
All right. Commissioner Romulus, you're in concurrence?
Aye.
All right. Thank you so much. Lori, did you understand?
Yes, sir.
All right, appreciate that. We're moving on to the last item, 13B, authorize the finance department to reduce the allowance for uncollectible accounts and the accounts receivable accounts by $49,341.71. This amount reflects unpaid ALS transportation billings that have been in collection for 12 months or longer.
I need to ask something of Chief.
I do, too.
Okay, since beginning of New Year, we already have one OD. I'm just saying, how much of this money is it like for transporting patients that have no insurance and, and like a free ride? How much is, what's the total out of this? What are we looking at?
Glenn Joseph Fire Rescue, Boynton Beach Fire Rescue. These bills are actually from 2013. We've been trying to collect on those since 2013, and it's gotten to the point where we find that they're uncollectible. So that's where we are.
Okay, forget the OD then. Let's go back.
But we'll see that in the, in the future years, Commissioner. You're making a very good point there.
That's what I'm saying. Forget that, but how much of this, did not have, people did not have insurance, et cetera, that you are going after? This is what I want to know.
We have a very aggressive billing program, one of the most aggressive in the county. Our reimbursement rate is about 80 percent, which is higher than anybody else in the county right now. So we do the best we can with the information we have. We collect it from the patient themselves, or we collect it from the hospital. We have relationships with both the hospital, Bethesda, and Delray, and JFK, and if they find information we don't have for billing purposes, we collect it from them and then do the billing.
What's the problem with the 20 percent? That's what I'm trying to find out.
Well, in a perfect world, it would be at 100 percent, but since we're not in a perfect world, we do the best we can.
I'm in a perfect world. I want to know what's happening to the 20 percent.
We're working on it as hard as we can.
Thank you, sir.
Very aggressively.
And we utilize a collection agency, Commissioner.
Okay.
First, we try to do our billing first, then we, then it eventually goes to collections. I don't know after how long--
Yeah, well--
--it comes back.
I'll work it out for you. We get the billing in, and what we try to do is turn it around as soon as possible, because the first one to drop usually gets the most money. So our turnaround time right now is about three to five days from the time of the incident.
Right.
Then do the billing. It goes to the billing company, and then if they are uncollectible, then we send it to a collection agency. And if that doesn't work, it comes back to our staff, and we have another person that tries to collect again on those, on those bills, and that goes on over three to four to five years. And after five years, then we have to a point where it's uncollectible.
Right. Lori, for the, you the city manager, own funds that are not collected, and we refer them to the collection agency, and the funds are given, how much does a collection agency retain for collecting that money?
Ask Tim if he can tell me that. I don't know that off the top of my head. After, I know also, Tim, you can comment on after how many years we attempt to collect that. Accounting rule-wise, we've got to write it off and get it off our books.
Tim Howard, they, the collection company keeps a 12 percent fee, collection fee, and it is reported to the credit agencies on all the people that we have information on. But some of these transports are either uninsured, or we don't have good data, so we make the attempt and collect, and then we turn it over to the collection agency. They turn it over to the credit bureau and try to collect. Now, in the future, it's, always stays there with the credit agency. If by chance, in five years, someone goes in to try to clean up their credit, and they, and they pay it off, it'll come back to us. It's never, it just, we write it off because of the age of it, but if someone does go in and clean up their credit, it'll come back to us eventually, but it's very little. I mean, it's--
Thank you. Answer that last half of Lori's question.
Oh. So from an accounting standpoint, every, at the end of every fiscal year, we have to make a estimate of what's, what we would determine from an accountant's standpoint as being uncollectible from a receivable. It's an accounting rule, it's not a formal write-off. We just set it up as an allowance for uncollectible. So historically, for any accounts receivable system, anything that you have outstanding after 12 months, the odds of collection drop to about, you may get about 20 percent of this type of collection. After 18 months, the odds of collecting are probably down to about 2 or 3 percent.
It's not a question for me. Since this is from years back, looking from there going forward, are we seeing an increase?
We haven't seen an increase. It stayed pretty steady for the last, the last two or three times we did write-offs, percentage-wise and dollar amounts.
Okay.
Chief, I got a couple of questions here. Since I've been sitting up here, and I notice these are four years old, that these numbers are like four years old, it's always been like about 26 percent. It's always been around that 400, almost 500,000, in between those two numbers there. And I understand that we write them off in the collection agency and all that good thing, so good stuff. But we recently, you implemented a new program where we're actually increasing our transports, the ALS transports. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we're actually taking more people onboard now to these hospitals, correct?
Correct.
So my question to you is, can we expect these numbers, as we get more and more people into the system, transport and people, these numbers I would suspect would change. We're still going to have the same issues with the uncollectibles. Now we have more people in the system, which could almost produce more uncollectibles. Am I right in saying that?
Yes, and let's give you some background.
Yes, sir, that's my wife always tells me.
Give you some background. So we're using a software package about 2013 to 2014, and it delayed our billing process. Remember I told you, the first one to drop usually gets the money. Since 2014, we've got a new software package that delays, that increases or reduces our billing time. And we'll see that, we should see some numbers start to decrease by 2015 going forward. So when we go to the 2015 write-offs, those numbers are going to get smaller moving forward. 2014, we were still on the old software, and in 2015, we made a changeover. So going forward from there, you should see a decrease. On the transports, our total billing in 2016 was about 2.6 million. At the end of fiscal year for 2017, October, we were at 3.3, almost 3.4 million dollars. So we've seen, because of the increased number of transports that we have, we've seen an increase in the number of receivables.
Okay, do you have a number that, out of those transports, and those, those positive numbers that you just, is there a negative number there that were uncollectible? And I know we've got to go three to three, four-year period, but as of today?
Yeah, we're processing those numbers, and we, usually our customers are on 80 percent. So based on past practice, I'm expecting about 2.8 million to be returned to the city based on previous numbers. Again, it's just the end of the fiscal year, we're still working those numbers out.
So you expect this to, it's terrible to say, but it's going to be actually a revenue generator, these transports? I mean, that's why we're in the business.
If our return pattern continues to be the same, around 80 percent, we should see a significant increase in revenue from the additional transport.
Okay, so we're going to see an increase in the revenues, but I guess goes back to my original question, will we also see an increase in the uncollectibles?
Like I said earlier, I think we should see a decrease in the uncollectibles--
Because of the software program.
Because of the software program, and the Football Care Act, more people have insurance, therefore we're seeing more returns on our billing.
Okay. Can we, do we charge, can we take credit cards? Do we take, I think I brought this up one time, we take the credit cards now? Are we capable of doing that?
We do take credit cards, but we don't take it on scene.
We don't?
We don't take it on scene, no.
Is that something that we, it's a terrible thing, but the first thing you do, go into the hospital, they ask you, your insurance card.
So you have a heart attack, and sir, we'll transport you right now, but can we give you a MasterCard?
Take MasterCard Visa.
The optics might not be the one we want to project to our community.
Commissioner, they're firefighters, not attorneys.
Oh, yeah, they have to agree.
Okay, I will draw the question.
I'd just like to make the comment, thank you for all that you do for the city and the citizens, making sure that they are to the hospital as fast as possible. Thank you again.
It's not me, it's the whole team of good people working behind me.
No, thank, well, you're the leader, so you get the credit.
Chief, just one more question. In speaking with, you know, some of the men and women in the fire department, isn't our services are superior to the, the private sector alternative with regards to these transports? At least that's, you know, what I've been told by some of our firefighters, that, that we're able to do more because they're, they're likely inclined to do more as first responders versus employees of an ambulance service?
I can't denigrate a private sector provider, but what I said, I will say that we have some highly trained professionals in the city of Boynton Beach, probably some of the best in the county. And we have numbers to back that up. Our response to cardiac arrest victims, return of pulses, is about 35 percent. Everywhere else in the county, it's somewhere between 17 and 25 percent. So we are significantly better. We have better technology, we have good techniques, we have good training, we have good leadership. And so I would put us up against any, any provider, public or private, in the county or the, or the state.
Regards to private sector, private sectors, they only do like transports like non-emergencies. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passed unanimously. Anything for the rest of this meeting?
No, not by the rest of the meeting, but let me hold your calendar since I see it.[1738.11]